They told us they're like, it's because once you get bodies in here, the temperature goes up so fast that we have to basically keep it in ice box.
Right.
When there's no audience.
Right.
Where's that?
Pantages Manor in downtown Minneapolis.
Oh, okay.
All right, it is seven o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Almost didn't get through that without your help, you guys. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by council member Prishman?
Second.
Second by council member Pasco. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. All right, is anyone here for community comment this evening? Go ahead, one's going twice. All right, all right, up first is our fire department service awards. This is always so much of a fun night when we get to recognize our fire department for their service. And here you come, just like on cue, DeeDee. I think maybe what we'll do is we will go through all the service awards. There's a significant amount of them tonight. We'll do the service awards and then, you know, we like a good picture, so we'll do that. I know you guys love the attention and are here for the recognition. So we'll do that and we'll give you your moments. But up first, what we're doing tonight is we are celebrating sixty-five years' worth of experience on the fire department in this portion of the agenda. It's a total of eighty-seven years of experience on the fire department. So up first tonight, we have DeeDee Deacon, who we are celebrating her five-year anniversary with the fire department. I feel like that's a whole, like, coffee together to talk about what it must have been like starting during COVID on the fire department.
We should do that.
We should do that sometime.
We should do that.
Let's see, we have Doug, who is Doug Alea, who is celebrating ten years on the fire department. There he is. Congratulations, Doug. We have Jason Scholstadt, who's celebrating ten years. Congratulations, Jason. We also have Luke Swartz, who is celebrating ten years on the fire department. There. Y'all are just alike. It takes a second to find you guys. Then we have Brian Hall, celebrating fifteen years. Congratulations, Brian. And then last but not least, also celebrating fifteen years, we have Jared Payne. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let's give our service anniversaries a round of applause. All right, and we have recognition plaques for everybody, so let's do those pictures. Up first, we'll do DeeDee.
Do you want me to...
Um.
Can I just... Did you celebrate twenty-four?
Yes.
Yep, twenty-four. Yep, no, a hundred and one.
Great. Well, you got it.
Okay, you gotta get in there. Yeah, Kim, 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 Kim. You gotta go with my DeeDee.
Okay, you three are really close together and you three are a really far apart.
We need to make it nice.
Feel the person behind me. Person behind you.
Okay.
All right. All right, Doug.
Oh, okay. Oh, you don't want room over there?
That's the real reason why they were close. They didn't have enough room.
Me? All of everybody? Yeah.
There, that is much more.
That's up. Yeah, let's do it now. Oh, yes.
I'll tell you. Great. Okay.
Erin is our own official official city photographer.
All right, Jason. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I take half a step in? Great. Do you want to bring your family in?
Yes. She refuses.
Yes, I do.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, Lou. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Say Monte Carlo.
Monte Carlo.
Do you have anyone in?
Huh?
Do you have anyone?
Yeah. Now you just have to come up.
Oh.
They should know it.
You and I are getting our exercise.
We are.
Congratulations.
All right, you're really figuring this out now. Do you want to add anyone?
Yep, I have them right there. Come on.
Do you want to take it with your phone? That's okay. I'll text it, yeah. And then last but not least, Jared. He knows he's coming. Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to add? Yes. Do you want to add anyone?
Yes, Cole.
Come on.
Sorry, I think he volunteered to.
Need the wire.
Yeah, I volunteered.
Get head around him.
Yeah, I said, yeah. All right, and then because we're working with microphones that aren't really working, you probably don't have to go to the back. But up next, we are celebrating former Chief Trumbow's retirement. So Callie, I know that nobody loves recognition. Tonight is your night. You retired July first, right?
July third.
July, oh, sorry.
Independent.
You got your independence from the fire department on July third. I appreciate all of your work. Twenty-three years in the fire department, six as chief, I believe it says. So we're here to celebrate you tonight. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, your dedication, the sleepless nights, the getting up in the middle of the night. The same goes true for everybody. Appreciate everything you guys do for community and all of your hard work to keep us safe. So thank you very much, Callie. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Callie's been celebrated as grand marshal at a senior days event. So another recognition event that he really wanted to do.
That one's pretty cool.
Get yourself on the platform. All right, I love your fam.
Sorry, my first step.
Great. Do you want... You look down.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Come on, take one.
He needs a dirt.
You'll appreciate having those pictures.
Which one? Congratulations, Callie.
Thank you. And I did write a speech. And I'll keep it short, but really I can't thank my family enough. You know, basically all they knew was the fire department, like, you know, for the last twenty-two years. And then you guys all made it super simple. You know, I couldn't be more proud to run family like you guys. It's truly an honor to be working side by side with all of you. You know, some for the whole career, some for, I hired most of you that. It was quite an honor. So thank you all for everything you've done. And thank you Brent and all the council members, Courtney. You guys have been great to work with. So I appreciate everything you guys did or have done for the fire department and for me as I had my career in the city of Carver. So thank you. That's it.
All right, stop. Normally Christie gets me. I'm a sympathetic crier. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. With that, you guys are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, which is gonna be brief tonight. So if you ever stay for long, this would be the one. Thank you all. Ooh, it's like a squishy.
A little comfortable.
He did look at me and smile.
Oh. All right, let's see. Moving on to the agenda, we don't have any public hearings this evening. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member Cameron?
I'll second.
Second by council member Prishman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. All right, let's see. No business items. Maybe before we get into communications, we're gonna revert back to a topic from the work session. For those of you watching at home, I always use this as the disclaimer that the work session are the topics that we're kind of seeing for the first time and we're discussing and kind of taking a deep dive into. This is our kitchen table conversation and tonight's topic are the 2026 enterprise fund budgets. So with that, Ms. Shute and Mr. Simmons, why don't you guys take off where we left off?
All right, thank you. Perfect. Okay, so I was talking about the 2026 operating expense highlights and we were discussing how it is better to take more of a maintenance approach. And then you're taking more preventative instead of having to spend more money on repairs in the future, replacement in the future. I think I was at the computer software maintenance. We are planning for $5,000 in each fund for a mobile app. And then there's also some increase in software needs for the SCADA capabilities, just software. Property insurance, over the last couple of years, when after the water treatment facility expansion has been completed, so probably the last two years, property insurance has gone up about forty percent in the water fund. And that's just simply because of value. It's based on value. And that was a huge expansion. And then the Met Council sewer charge, which is determined by the Met Council, for 2026, that charge is gonna be 481,000, which is almost a 4.9% increase. So I have revenues on the left, expenses on the right, and then I have water, sewer, and stormwater. So enterprise funds are a little bit different because your budget does not need to be balanced. So our revenues are what we're really expecting them to be for our charges, you know, to customers or residents and other fees. And then our expenses are what we actually need to spend. And so that's why you'll see that the revenues don't always equal the expenses in the enterprise funds. So enterprise funds debt service, these are the payments by bond issue. These are the principal payments, not the interest. I can go into any of these if you want me to. This is just a snapshot. And then here I have total by the actual debt service bond. So thirty-three percent is the highest one, and that is the 2021 B water treatment. Like I said, I just got done saying that that was a big project, so. And then the next largest one is a refunding of the 2008, 2008 B bonds. So proposed twenty-six utility usage fees, we did discuss this at the prior session, three percent increase to all water fees. That includes the usage and the base rate. Five and a half increase to sewer fees based on volume. However, the base rate, we're proposing to go from five to eight dollars, contrary to the originally planned $10 in the previous long-term financial plan. No increase to residential or commercial stormwater. So proposed rates are on the right-hand side. I will note as well that the water testing fee, which is determined by the state, that is increasing to $1.27 per month. And that we collect and then we pay it through. So we do collect that on the monthly bills, but we do issue that directly to the state. Which is a little unfortunate because it looks like their bill is increasing, but.
Is that called out specifically on the water bill?
It is.
Is it still written there?
Yeah. Yep. So I threw in some examples, very similar to the previous presentation, but I used 2,000 gallon bill, which you can see here is a 7.38% increase. As you get a little bit higher, it actually, your increase gets lower, which you wouldn't think, but... This is the slide showing the developer fees and the connection fees. So if you're building a new house, you would pay this at the building permit. That would be the connection fees. And then the water access charge that we just implemented last year, that's the developer that would be paying those. So we're looking at three percent increase to all of these fees. So I gave examples for the developer fee based on number of lots. I did a small, like, plat of 25 lots and then I did one of 125 lots. I just guessed. I just, this is just pretend. So first up, for the 25 lot, they would have paid 82,500 in 2025. Now it would go up by about almost $2,500. So what does that look like for a little bit of a larger plat? It would be 412,500. It would go up by about $12,000. So you're thinking, you know, how does this affect the developers? That's how it affects the developers right there. Here is that slide that Delano got cut off of, I believe, the 8,000 gallon one. Or no, maybe it's the next one. I, anyway. Delano, New Market, Carver, I stole their slide. Because it's the same information, but you can see the benchmark cities there. If you have any questions, I have the actual amounts and data too. So the next steps, any information, suggestions that we receive tonight from the council staff can go ahead and make changes to the enterprise budget based on the feedback. And then same with the tenure financial plan, which could affect the rates, you know, on the utilities. And then the fee schedule will be presented to council in November. So any of those utility rates will be on that fee schedule. And then completely optional, you can review the enterprise fund budgets again in November. And the budget will be adopted at the last meeting in December. So we have some time yet. Anything that you want to see changed, different, new, happy to make those changes.
Okay, we'll be seeing the budget again though, because we don't have the health insurance and all that in. So is this, are you talking about just the enter...
Just the enterprise?
Just the enterprise, yeah. Absolutely, the general fund budget.
Okay. Okay, but any questions about the enterprise or anything that you want to see different in enterprise fund budgets? Kayla?
No.
Christie?
No.
No. Eric?
Do we ever talk about the rate for heavy user, water users, the 10,000 plus?
Yes.
We socialized that a little earlier because that impacts everybody when you're using 30,000 or 50,000 gallons. When's the last time we had a discussion about the rate at a high water user?
It is. Just from memory, it's maybe six or seven years ago, but there was a, we had, we were playing around with a scenario. We just couldn't, you know, there's some unintended consequences at different rate scenarios, so we wanna, no pun intended, we wanna flush that out a little bit.
It's okay.
I can't help myself. But, you know, the...
I'm glad I have a Kleenex for the tears.
But it's something that we wanna give you a bunch of scenarios, but as you... Although you want to control water, like, there gets to be, like, when you think of, like, higher users, like irrigation or like an apartment complex, like, how do you do that without, since they have one meter, like theoretically after they get past the first 20,000, even, well, they might have 60 units, then everything is billed out, billed out at that, like, higher rate. So I just have to kind of, we want to work through the mechanics of that so that somebody who's living in a, even though their landlord may be paying it, someone who's living in a high density or an apartment complex, might inadvertently be paid more for water than a neighbor who lives in a single-family home. So we just have to work through that and give you the information before you can make some policy decisions on it.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Do the apartment buildings in Carver just have one water meter?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't know that.
I didn't know that either. So my question, when we're talking about the AMI system, when we had the individual in last week, it talked about there's the AMI system and then there's kind of the, and I'm getting this wrong, but there's the, like, additional software system or the app or something
Yes.
where I can tell if my water usage is trending higher, if I need to yell at somebody in my house
Yes.
to start taking shorter showers. Is the number that you have in here, is that for the basic or is that for the, with the additional package?
Well, that does not include the software that the consumer would be able to see the data. And the reason for that is because it likely wouldn't be implemented in 2026.
Okay.
We don't want to implement any of that until everything is completed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you know just ballpark how much additional there is?
I think the, it's around 15,000 and that includes the install and labor. And then the software after that, I want to say is no more than seven.
And it's a one and done or that's an annual?
Annual.
Okay.
Because it's a cloud. So everything's moving to the cloud now and everything's annual.
Okay.
I can get you solid numbers on that though.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious because for me, like, I think we've come to the conclusion that we have to go this way because the regular drive-by water meters are going away and that this is a, that was the time. But I like that benefit of being able to see where we're at in terms of water usage each month. The other question that I had, and I'm sorry, it's slide 11 where you use the utility bill examples from low volume to high volume. I understand why it's this way, but I would love to, and it's a little bit to kind of what Eric was saying, but I would like to see a little bit more of a system where we encourage and kind of reward conservation. So it's a bummer to see the largest increases for the people who use the least amount of water. And then the least amount of increase for the folks who use the most amount. So it sounds like you're workshopping ideas on that. I love the idea of another rate class if possible. And maybe there's some asterisks that I know you guys are probably working through with, you know, apartment buildings and those kinds of things, but I, I don't love seeing this, that the folks who use the least amount are gonna be seeing the highest amount increase.
I think we have the four tiers almost, almost ready to go. We just haven't had enough time to discuss it with you guys
Okay.
you know, prior to the rollout and prior to 2026, so it just feels too soon.
When you say almost ready to go, not by 2026? Okay.
And I would offer, like, the percentages can be misleading, like taking something from $2 to $4 as a function of math, it's gonna be a higher percent.
Yeah.
Dollar-wise, the higher tiered users are paying more. It's just the lowest tier, that 2,000 is going 68, 70, or 81 to 73, 89. So like, I think the higher percentage is always gonna be baked in on those lower tiers. But I think we can get, like, think about adding that fourth tier, but I'm not sure we can resolve the percentages because of the, as the dollar goes up, it'll just take more money to get to that seven percent. I mean, you could, you could functionally say that we're gonna, we're gonna do the math backwards and we want that same percent increase across the board. There's just more process to that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I get why the math maths, even with my Macs com math, but you know, the lower the number, the $2 increase is gonna be a larger percent. But I just, if there was a way to balance that out a little bit more or, like, ideally inverse it, and I might be asking for calculus that doesn't exist, I get that.
Just one, I mean, if the council wanted to, you, I mean, you have the prerogative to adjust those rates so that you, without adding the fourth tier, but you could make those tiers line up percentage-wise if you, you know, just have to do the math on it.
Do other cities put multi-dwelling units into a different category?
I don't know offhand.
Like an apartment building?
I know there are ways to do that. I just, I'm not versed enough in it to explain it, but I know.
Because maybe there are five categories if you want to take multi-dwelling units and categorize them differently.
Right, and then there's the, you know, not to get, like, really deep into this, but you think about, like, car washes or other, like... Right, and then there's the, you know, not to get like really deep into this, but you think about like car washes or other like industrial water users. Um, is that gonna have an adverse effect if you use water as a, a resource? Okay. I thought you were reacting to what I said.
No, yeah, no, sorry, that probably-
Or not.
That calls numbers, unhappy, no, I just think like, yeah.
So, I mean, that has come up, uh, we've had folks call about, uh, car washes and, um, you know, although we've talked about like their, um, the recycling piece, you know, in my estimation, it's not the recycle piece, that's wholly less bad from another car wash, it's the water rates. And the volume that they would use would put them at that top tier, and if you added another tier that was, you know, even more, you know, you're in that same position plus. And so what does that all look like? We wanna make sure that we vet out all those scenarios for you so that you're thinking about that when you determine what the, the gallon amount is and what that corresponding price is. And, you know, just, I don't wanna be able to lay out for you, like, what would you, what would be considered to be the average, um, use for irrigating someone's lawn and, you know, I don't think you wanna be cost prohibitive where if someone says, I wanna have green grass, you just don't want it to be like mushy green grass, right? And so, all these like comments that we've received over months and years, we wanna be able to show that to you so that you can use that in determining, so I I don't think we're in a position to wanna rush that.
Okay. All right, um, that is it for me. No other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. Mm-hmm. Um, okay, communications.
Thank you, Mary Council, so handful of updates here. Uh, as we all know, the council chamber's audio equipment, the, the hardware did kind of a full, uh, meltdown, if you will, and so we do believe we have someone, uh, to take that on, starting, I think it was next Monday. I'm not a hundred percent sure on the price, but it's in the twelve to probably fifteen thousand dollar neighborhood, so once we have that, uh, I'm likely going to authorize it under an emergency purchase since it's not in the budget and then bring it to you, just so that we can try to get that on board and ready to use for your first meeting in November. But it involves not just the hardware, but then when you bring in the hardware, they have to basically program the entire audio system from scratch. So there's just a lot of, uh, people hours and labor as a part of that process, so. But also silver lining, a good reminder that, um, as like technology goes, although this is a new building, audio and video equipment can age out really quickly, so it was a reminder for me to like start thinking about, you know, replacing these microphones and monitors and et cetera and how we're, we're doing that.
Was there anything we did that, as a city, that caused it to catastrophically malfunction?
You're applying with the microphone.
We're sharing our own route too much.
No, not that, not that we've been told. We brought, we brought out a couple of different companies and, uh, no one said anything uh, that would lend itself to thinking that we caused it to occur other than it's older.
Yeah.
Apparently there's, um, other pieces of hardware that are maybe more conducive to what we're doing that work better, that, or at least other people are more comfortable with. And we've, uh, we're using the folks that Chaska uses and this person is out of Chanhassen. Or, uh, we used another company that was kind of headquartered on a Saint Cloud and so I think having someone more local, uh, that kind of work out of their garage. So I think it's gonna be more affordable and better access for Brenda and the team to like, if something comes up, we're not trying to like fix it. We can bring in somebody who knows what buttons to push, so.
Does this come with any kind of warranty?
Not on a s- oh, on the new piece of equipment? Yeah, I don't know what that is today.
Okay.
But once it's selected, we'll, we can share that back over.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, speaking of equipment failing, the, uh, speed signs on Jonathan Carver Parkway, uh, that designate or identify the school speed zone uh, have failed and need to be replaced. Again, uh, probably more so than the audio equipment, something that, uh, you would have thought and hoped would have last long, lasted longer, so I'm not sure what caused these to fail, but in the county's estimation, they need to be, uh, excuse me, replaced.
How long have they been there?
I think it's eight years, the district or the elementary.
Yeah, it's kind of ridiculous that they went out at eight years. Um, who owns, who technically is responsible for that though?
Well, that's kind of the, uh, fifteen thousand dollar question, if you will, cause that's the replacement cost. Uh, the, the county did not put them in, they typically required engineering study to install them. That was, uh, bypassed. Uh, the school district or Carver Elementary asked for them. Uh, they in turn went to the Carver Lions, the Carver Lions funded it, the county installed them, and so now we're in a position where kind of everyone's wondering, well, who owns them or who needs to replace them. Um, ultimately, uh, I've offered that, I think that the community wants to keep them, that if they came down and weren't replaced, that there would probably be a full council chambers or full county boardroom, et cetera, so. I've been in contact with Lyndon Robjett at the county and then David Brecht at the school district in the hopes of trying to create some type of partnership, perhaps we can split the cost three ways. Um, but ultimately, uh, that needs to be kind of vetted and approved and, um, so I wanted to get that on your radar, if you have any initial feedback to.
I, should we understand, there's, they've been looked, there's no way to repair what's wrong? I mean, uh.
Uh.
There's solar power.
Yeah, they have to have a battery and those have a finite lifespan.
I don't know that intricate detail. I can find out and report back. The, the operations director for the county, Shelby Savell, this sent an email, I think I forwarded it out to the council that they need to be replaced at a cost of seven thousand per sign, so. Um, I can, I guess, uh, to do, I can follow up and, and, oh, ask what needs to be replaced. Uh, or what opportunities there for repair rather than replacement.
Yeah, I think, cause I had, I, that wasn't part of that email, I haven't seen any information about that, so to just say, we need, you know, fifteen thousand dollars to replace these signs when they seem a short lifespan, like you said, it's just with solar, it's gotta be things, components in there that.
They have a battery and those have a finite lifespan. So, I've worked, have worked with these kind of devices before when they have a, a cellular connection and they do have a maintenance schedule, so I'm sure somebody's aware of that, I'm sure there's a manufacturer to reach that.
Carver County's been maintaining them.
Yeah.
I do know that. And the sign is obviously intact. I think one of them was kind of falling down, the, the southbound lane one, so that's, I don't think that's even up right now. But, good question, I can follow up with the county and see what they say.
I do agree there that the community would want this. I think it's a, nobody wants to be speeding in a school zone and that's a great reminder of how fast you're going and what you need to do.
With eleven being the thoroughfare that it is also from, from morning and evening traffic, where rush hour times of people getting to Jordan or wherever, I think it's important to have them.
I agree.
Um, expensive. I can't speak for the Lions Club, but I know they just put out some large donations, so I don't know that. All they could do is ask, I don't know that the Lions would be funding it a second time, but.
Sure. Uh, I'm gonna skip the Mount Gob Road, Old Carver Road. I put this slide together on Friday, so we went into closed session to talk about the right away there, so I'll skip that. Uh, wanted to give the council an opportunity, uh, we did some tours last week at, uh, Ramsey, Friendly and Orinol, and then today at Chanhassen, so if the council has any feedback or observations that they'd like to share publicly or with Andrew, I think that'd be helpful as, uh, we get into the design development phase with, uh, Ortel and Tara would be helpful. Or questions for Andrew, uh, that you might have as well.
Is, oh, sorry, I was gonna say, after this work session that we're having now, um, because we just toured Chan today. No, I didn't make it to the other ones, um, I'm not sure who else made it to that, but I would like to see from Andrew and maybe some staff, some collective thoughts on their side to hear what they saw, what they liked, what they didn't like. It doesn't have to be down to the fine detail, but I think if you have any photos from, you know, we loved Orino's and here is why, because this bay looks like that or whatever. Um, if maybe for me, that would be helpful to also have an opinion to hear their side along. Again, I can't comment to all of the other ones, but I, I've ended the Chan one before and, and again today. Um, it would really help me to hear their, their take on it.
Do you wanna hear that in a report or do you wanna hear that, like we could have Andrew, Paula in Jordan come to a work session?
I think that would be fantastic to have three of them, yeah.
The latter?
Yeah, led by Andrew and maybe again, if you took photos when you're there and there's something that stands out, is this is really, we think that specific is really helpful, so you don't have to have a a grandiose presentation, but just maybe a little bit of visuals behind it so that we can see what you guys are thinking.
So I think we, we all went through the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We went through a process of providing a summary of everything that we saw and what was impactful to us, and I don't know that we wanna go through all of that now, but I can share some highlights. So the number one takeaway from three of the four sites we went to is don't short yourself on the building size. So if you're trying to corral the cost and it's the difference of, uh, doing something less than you think you're gonna need in the lifespan of that building, not to do it. Three of the four cities, uh, regret that.
Cause you never have enough closet space.
Right, so, uh, so that was, that was the big one. Uh, but in, when it came to the office space in the building, uh, to use as much natural lighting as you can, not to short change yourself on the windows, uh, and pass-through lighting, so an exterior window gets, uh, in, brings light into the, the main office area of the building. Uh, there were things about outlets. One really novel idea I thought were the outlets in individual lockers so that you could charge your phones and your tablets when they're in your locker. Uh, that was a simple thing that everybody really liked, so there was some things I would not have thought of. Uh, and again, I don't wanna, there's, we shared a lot of detail. The garage space, uh, one interesting, uh, note was don't paint lines. You think you should, but don't, because that forces you into a a traffic pattern that may not work in the future or even seasonally, so.
And say that one.
In the garage space, not to paint lines.
Like, like Chan today had where they parked in between those lines?
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, but that was a mistake that they, uh, they wish they hadn't done that. Um, and so there's a lot of specifics, but things that are gonna cost money that I know Andrew was, uh, taking note of is, is putting fast doors in, like when you go to a dealership and they go up in five seconds. They're expensive, but they have a longer service life, springs don't wear out as fast. They're lighter and it's sixty seconds less of the up and down travel of letting hot air out into the environment. So you recover the cost of that over a period of time. The, uh, and we've talked about this, but to be sure that the roof can support solar and that it has the conduits there, because choosing to do it later and not having the conduits in place would be the really expensive part. Uh, so I think everybody in the city provided a summary, and I know that you did. And I think what might be useful, Andrew, is, uh, to give back to council kind of a summation of, of what that was and the highlights and uh, you know, you can add your thoughts to it too, because you're the one compiling that. But it was a really useful tour. I wasn't able to go on today's, but, uh, you know, it is really, uh, enlightening to hear what didn't work, obviously, which they, what they wish they had changed and, uh, um, I, you would think that that all comes up in architectural review, but I think, uh, we'll be able to make better decisions based on what our neighbors told us.
Um, what I was gonna say is unless you guys were taking a lot of pictures, I don't know, like last Monday, I started off and I took probably a fair amount of pictures in Ramsey, but then as the day went on, I didn't take as many pictures. It's probably like having children, I don't take many pictures with the younger kids. Uh, but I, so I don't know that we're gonna have that physical, like, this room was great, you know, even if we all compiled our pictures, I don't know that we'll have that. As far as, um, me, I was, the feedback that I shared with the group, Brent kind of started the email chain and provided a really robust list, and then I tried to hit on the things that he hadn't added so that it wasn't duplicative, but um, we got a lesson about concrete floors and how you have to maintain them in a certain way and you're not supposed to just wash them down with water. So what I wanna do is make sure that we're really careful about knowing how the floor will have to be maintained and can and will we maintain it correctly, to make sure that it doesn't look all pocked and rudded like one of the facilities that we went to. Um, the outlet thing I loved. Um, I put, this is gonna be a working building where it's not gonna be uncommon for folks to come in tracking mud not only on their shoes, but maybe on their jeans and their hands or whatever, and make sure that the finishes really match with that, so that you can't see everybody walking through and even like the coatings on the walls, making sure that those are washable and durable in the office area. Um, metal buildings, um, cost twice as much to keep, but they're cheaper to build. They don't look right on the inside after dirt starts clinging to the condensation that forms on the insulation, like one of the areas that we went to visit. Um, this is a brand name, um, so it's a direct quote and I'm talking about a brand name of a fan. But, um, the, in Orino and Victoria, they recently installed big ass fans and they said that that made a huge. I love that you have to say that. I'm gonna get to say it. Um, they, they said it made a huge difference in the summer because I don't think any of the facilities that we went to were equipped to be air-conditioned in the summer, but getting that airflow with the fans really helped. Um, the garages, we heard this today too, lots of natural light really helps in the garage space. Um, except maybe on days like today, although it didn't start raining until we were done with the tour. Um, there were crank-out windows in one of the places we visited, which I didn't love. Build it bigger was probably something that we heard at every single place that we stopped at. Um, in one of the places, uh, we stopped said they didn't have enough bathrooms, so making sure that there are enough bathrooms. Um, but you know, I literally said in here, um, I don't anticipate we'll need, want public meeting room space in our building, but if we do, I liked how Ramsey's space was separate from the building offices. Today, in hearing that Chanhassen uses their public services building as a voting precinct, made me think, like, when are we gonna get to the point where we need two or more precincts in the city of Carver? And can we make that work and figure that out? So I think that that's something that we should keep on our, top of our list um, for potential future uses of that building. Um, the garage door, we heard that theme today, the importance of the right type of garage door, not too heavy, do you wanna do high speed? Um, today what we heard was cameras. I think that that's gonna be, and then fence and a gate. I think that that's gonna be really important, given how this is gonna be, you know, at least for the first handful of years, if not decade, you know, out on an island a little bit in our community. I think that that's gonna be super important. Um, and then we saw it today, but not everybody had it when we were on, uh, there on Monday, but kind of a mezzanine, but the half mezzanine, almost the shelves for like the plow trucks so that you don't have everything on the ground, especially in the summer, so. Um, that's a dozen or more of kind of my key takeaways that I heard today. But I'm curious like what you guys walked away with today. That was just one, but it was, it was a good one. I would say it was one of the newer-ish, well, maybe not even newer, like in contrast to what we saw last Monday, but I would say it was one of the better facilities that we saw.
Cranes, uh, the, the large gantry crane, inexpensive investment, but a couple of the cities said it gets used in ways we never anticipated. And Paul also mentioned that it was a, uh, enhancement to just kind of worker safety, to have that level of uplifting capacity and the flexibility as opposed to what we have now that's really kind of stationary. to have that level of, of lifting capacity and the flexibility as opposed to what we have now that's really kind of stationary.
And not even worker safety, sorry, but more of like accessibility. So instead of like crawling underneath a vehicle to get to something, you know, you can take it out and move it and access it easier, so, sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say, so I, again, I can't compare to the other facilities, but I've, I've always liked the Chan Hassan facility. I think it seems to be set up fairly well inside. One thing I took away today is that, um, one of the big trucks that he had, and they, cause they had the side, come in this way, right? They had the side one, he said, we have to bring it in this way because we can't make the turn radius to get it parked into this stall. So I thought that was really something like, think about that, like are we gonna be able to get it in there without doing the Austin Powers when they're stuck in the hallway?
You've seen that movie, right? Just checking, we know the cultural references, movie references are lost on you.
You know, I'm so busy working for the city that I have barely time to be watching movies. But I have seen that one because that was before I was mayor.
But I'd also like to hear about, um, their admin staff and the front desk staff that they have working there. Um, I think maybe it sounds, it's, we, at least it wasn't in my fourth out to think about, oh, we could actually have people stopping out there and to, do we need to have someone in that capacity who's working the front desk there? Um, and then how that was set up and it was done a little bit incorrectly, they had a little problems with the noise and things with the, with the areas around, but I thought, okay, so we may actually have staff out there too that's gonna be there full time, you know, Monday to Friday. Um, just the different duties that they talked about, um, and responsibilities this person had, I guess it didn't really cross my mind that way. So, um, I liked to hear about that and then how they could have done that setup better. Um, I did like the separation of having the offices so that you've got that foreman level that they were talking about where those guys kind of are all in the offices and your superintendents are in other ones. Um, I think, I mean, there are phone calls that happen, there are things that happen, so this isn't as much on the, you know, the dirt side of things where we're pulling trucks in, but I thought some of that admin side of things we have to think about too and I liked, I liked that out there. Um, when they did have the, the windows and I appreciated that he talked about having natural light so it doesn't look like a dungeon in there, so I agree with that because that shop itself, if there was no lights, would have been very much like you were buried in a hole somewhere because it's dark in there even with that, so. Um, I liked the lighting that they have that goes on and off as people come in and out too, so. Those were just a few things, I mean, we've, we can talk about trucks and things all day, but those were a couple of the other details that I noticed.
I'm still, um, I haven't quite solidified my thoughts on the tour today. Um, I'm very grateful to Brent for scheduling a second tour and to Chan Hassan for being willing to accommodate it. It, it was nice to be able to at least see one facility. Uh, I did think it was interesting that they, how the city designed it to be used for city functions as well. And I think that one of the really important things that their manager said, um, was don't take personal preferences into account when you're designing the spaces. Because when that person will leave and when that person leaves, you're stuck with whatever their preferences were, whether or not those are useful to the city. So I thought that was really important to keep in mind that we wanna, uh, accommodate and, uh, create a space that works for our public work staff, but not to take individual preferences into mo, into consideration necessarily when designing those spaces, so.
Thanks for saying that, I was gonna circle back and mention that again, cause that was like, Andrew, I hope that you retire from the city of Carver someday, but like, let's make it so that it works for our community and not necessarily for Paul or for Eric or for Andrew, you know?
No resolute desk for you in your office.
Proudset up.
He can charge his tablet when it's in the locker. Um, some of the same things, um, was there was a, a large veh, whatever, large equipment that was pulling a trailer and how they couldn't, if they weren't too many to drive through the car wash, they wouldn't have been able to bring that in there. So, like, just, you know, the, having the foresight of that. I was curious, um, I think he was explaining where they put the snow and they have to plow their own snow so then they don't spend time on plowing what they plow.
Oh, yeah.
Could they not drive around the whole building?
No.
Oh, like to me that would be a mess, like people wanna be able to, plus you could just have cameras or just, for stuff like that, you know, just if you.
That whole backside, you can get around it, it's just grass.
Okay, um, unless it was like really expensive to, for the excavating, I would wanna see something where you could drive all the way around it.
I agree, Laurie, yeah, yeah.
I think they had that hill there, it's just challenging, cause then they probably would add new retaining wall.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that's also, he was talking about wanting to, they wanna add on, but they're gonna, it's gonna be incredibly expensive and looking at the geometry of the building compared to that hill, I'm thinking that that is probably a big part of that cost is that they're gonna have to pump that, that whole land moving process to make that happen, so.
We're flat out there, I agree with Laurie.
Yeah, we have a block ordinance down there.
We have a block ordinance, we don't have a block.
Not that, I'm.
All the block ordinance is throughout the country.
So there was that, um, and then, um, the break room, work room, gathering place, like just a more of like a multi-function that you see kind of in schools with, um, it was very clear that the island could not be big enough, but also add outlets to the island.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that, um, you know, was a takeaway. Uh, to me, and I don't know if it was just the way the, the offices with doors were set up, but it didn't seem like they were consistent in the size, I don't know why you just wouldn't have a lot more conformity for that idea of too of, you just don't know how, you know, staffing needs or just, yeah, I would rather have seen just a lot more conformity. Um, and, uh, they had, he had also talked about having like a guest office or, um, where I work, they do the hotel cubes. But, um, and they don't need to be big because usually you're not bringing monitors with you. But I do think, you know, maybe even more than one, but just kind of like that, what they call like the hoteling, um, might be, uh, s- something that would be of value.
That's it.
Just a few more things that I thought of, um, I don't think Chan Hassan had it when we were there today, but some of the places that we visited last week had these like light tubes, almost like skylights in the garage.
Solar tubes.
What?
Solar tubes.
Yep, solar tubes, um, thank you. Um, that helped, really, really helped bring in a lot of light in these like big garages, kind of bringing in more light in the middle. Um, we saw it a little bit today in Chan Hassan, kind of right behind the front desk where they had those three computers, but bullpens for folks to do time cards and check in and out. Um, then an area of having just a bunch of like communal, uh, computers for folks to use, um, microwaves, you can't have too many microwaves, and then accounting for like a flex in staff, so seasonals. Because Chan Hassan, it sounded like they nearly doubled their staff in the summer. And I think not only are we gonna want something that we're gonna be able to grow into from a staffing perspective, but we're also gonna be growing annually with seasonal starting team, so.
Andrew made a comment while we were there too that I wanna bring up now, which is that, um, one of the things that you said to me was that it's really important that the locker rooms be segregated by gender so that individuals can feel comfortable changing and using those in spaces as they're intended. So I thought that that was important to note as well.
So what you're looking for?
Yep, thank you. Uh, fire department employee handbook, so I mentioned another provi, or I mentioned a provision at your last meeting. Uh, we've been working on that, but we've decided to not just take, pluck that one and do a comprehensive review. We still think we can kind of fast track that. Uh, the fire chief, uh, team is looking at that, but I think, uh, by the, by December or at the latest, by the end of the year, we should have, uh, revisions to the handbook, um, to present to the city council, so. Uh, update there, uh, we're planning on bringing the public services property annexation to the council on the seventeenth. Um, kind of as a, um, connection to the public works facility tours. Uh, we found out about a jetter vac truck opportunity that Andrew's gonna talk a little bit about.
Yeah, so it was Ramsey, Ramsey that had, uh, a jetter vac truck from two thousand nine that they're planning on selling here this year. Um, cause they're running like a fifteen year rotation on them, when that rotation's up, they sell it. Um, Jordan, our utility supervisor, he has a good relationship with the, uh, their supervisor from Ramsey. So they were just talking about jetter vacs in general and he's like, yeah, we're selling this, so you know, it's kind of one of those benefits from going out to meet people and see their other shops, but, um, so basically right now, we have a jetter truck and we have a vac trailer. So it takes two trucks to run, um, to jet the lines and stuff, but, uh, this is a all in one unit. Uh, they're extremely expensive trucks, a brand new one, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, so we're doing some research, I'm trying to get the specs from their truck to send it to a guy that can research it a bit more and see what the motors are type on that truck to see if they're gonna last for what we needed it to last for, so we're gonna do our due diligence on that. Um, Jordan and Craig are probably gonna run up to Ramsey to test it out. Um, so they can actually use it and see if it's actually in working order. Um, but then the bottom line just comes down to dollars and cents. So that conversation will continue to happen with Ramsey to see what they would actually sell it for. Um, they've told us that they would sell it directly to us and not put it up for auction. Um, so we're waiting to hear back for what our jetter truck would get on the trade-in and what our back trailer would get on the trade-in, so maybe we can make this clean swap for a two for one. So, um, if it's like a twenty-five thousand dollar investment and we get rid of two pieces of equipment and get one that the guys could use, um, to clean the sewer lines. Um, then have the sewer budget sixty-five thousand dollars to clean the lines. That would be us hiring out someone to do that. And if we get this all in one unit, Jordan's confident we can do that in-house. So there's potential savings there that we're starting to do this stuff in-house rather than farm it out, so. We're gonna keep doing the research on it and when we get updates, we can give them to you, so.
The impression I had is that it's in pretty good shape, it is just because of the rotation schedule and no other reason, so.
And that's what a lot of the big cities, they don't have time to nickel and dime stuff, they just turn it over and they go.
So it would be, I sensed it would be a pretty big win if we can pull this off and the, uh, who you know really might pay off here. And if we can get it, if it doesn't go to auction, that's great.
And this piece of equipment is something that's been on the periphery of our equipment plan. We just keep pushing it out because it's seven hundred and fifty thousand, um, so it'd be a win if we could get it for twenty.
If, let's just say we got it for, uh, twenty, right? Um, but the jetter and vac truck, how old are the ones, or the, what we have now, the separate ones?
By the way, I'd argue that it's worth more than twenty.
I would, I would, so I would.
It looked brand new.
It looked brand new, well, so do our fire and breaths if it were to be replaced or, but, um.
I think they're both used.
We bought them in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
But, um, let's see, the back trailer's a two thousand two. And then the jetter truck, shh, 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 don't have a year on that. But that we also bought in twenty nineteen from flexible pipe, we bought both of them.
Brand new?
No.
Used.
That was used as well, and that in the last five years has seen a thousand miles of driving, so.
Is there any reason to look at?
It's not been used to its full potential.
Keeping, keep, like, let's just say we had such a phenomenal price on this jetter vac truck. Is it worth bringing that we're gonna have another facility out here, we're gonna be growing? Is it in our best interest to keep the ones, what we have now, along with this if we were to buy it?
So the back trailer I know needs some work on it.
Okay.
Um, some new pumps on it, which is gonna be an investment itself, probably around the ten thousand dollar range, which I don't really wanna do if we have a piece of equipment that can do the same exact thing, so. It seems like a lot of cities, they either have one, they either have the trailers or the separate ones or they have.
Okay, but cities don't have more than one? Oh, they don't, okay, okay, I just don't wanna come six years from now and say, oh, we could really use another piece of what we just got rid of, so.
And I think, I mean, there's, the worry I have is that if we do make the investment and five years from now it doesn't work out, then it's not great. So that's what keeps me up in the night, so it's not a, not suggesting this as a limb and a.
Right.
So it's an opportunity and we have to bet that opportunity and if it works out, you know, that we think it's gonna last us ten, fifteen years like it should, then it'd be worth it.
We'll see what happens.
Uh, so more to come on that, uh, local emergency operations plan, planning that was in our strategic plan. We, this was a couple of years back, we initially had a kind of a, a relationship with a consultant to help us, um, build that plan and then we had, that did work out the way that we had hoped, so we moved on from that and tried to do it internally, we had a switch on fire chiefs. Uh, ultimately we're going, we're meeting with another consultant that was recommended, uh, from someone that we have a relationship with. It's just not the kind of plan, like, let's say, like, uh, parking ordinance that, like, you can copy paste. And so like I, for as much as I would like to try to take a crack at it, I think we need some expertise and more so than, even with Tim's experience, like this someone to kinda help put the plan together. I don't think it needs to be a big document, but kind of similar to the theme that we ta, we're talking about here. If, if, uh, Andrew, Tim and I were all gone and Paul Schultz, like, could someone pick up that plan from off the, a desk and say, okay, this is what we do during a flood event? And that's the document that we're looking for, so it's not all resting in organizational history and experience. And so, uh, at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, I made a connection with, uh, the Burnsville city manager. They gave a presentation on their, uh, tragedy that happened and they have an emergency operations plan that is a scaled down version of what the county has, so I think we have a good template, but it's more specific than just, you know, deleting Burnsville and putting in Carver. Because it's probably one of the most important things that we do is responding to emergencies, right? So, uh, more to come on that, um, we don't have anything in the budget for that. Um, so I'm kinda gonna be updating and mon, monitoring that situation as well. Uh, House Investment Committee visit is coming up, uh, this Thursday. Uh, it's re, the Senate committee worked out really well at Church by the River. So they're coming.
One fifty.
One fifty, um, on Thursday. And then, uh, finally, I'm gonna turn this over to Erin, the Met Council workshop.
Tomorrow night, six thirty downstairs, council and planning commission are both invited. Um, Mackenzie from the Met Council, he's the Met Council staff person I work with, will be there and then Deb Barber with the Met Council, so I took a look at their presentation today, they're gonna give an overview, start talking about our next round of comp plans, things that have changed, but also a really great opportunity for you to ask questions for the folks that set some of the policies that were required to meet, so tomorrow, six thirty, I told them to put together an hour-ish presentation and then some time for questions, so hope to be out here by eight and it'll be great just to have the council and planning commission together too.
And one of the things, we're back to that strategic plan, is trying to think about or brainstorm opportunities to engage the community in different ways and building and communicating plan progress. So if you wanna start thinking about those things, it might be helpful as well.
All right, let's quick list tonight. All right, council updates, can anyone go first?
Um, I thought I had something to say and then we got into city council or city manager updates and now it has all gone out of my head, so no, but I reserve the right to raise my hand when Eric's done to add something to the list.
Sounds good.
Uh, last week we had HPC on Tuesday, we have one application, it was a window replacement that was approved. Um, I was at the business alliance meeting on Friday morning, um, I guess major talks or, or topics of conversation there were. Um, I guess major talks or our topics of conversation there were different buildings for if, if building or businesses are down here right now and in the historic district, what they can do, can they enhance it, enlarge it, heighten it? You know, what might that look like if they want more space? Um, some marketing was talked about uh, for the different businesses and then um, just health insurance costs ends up coming up. So that other businesses too are feeling the same squeeze that everyone gets, right? With health insurance prices rising. Um, I don't know if there's anything else highlighted in that meeting, but I think that was. Oh, I will say that, one other thing, so the Lions did um, approve at their meeting just before, so we know that Annette Hens is part of the Carver and the Minnesota group. Um, the Lions are donating a thousand dollars towards their upcoming project. I can't remember off the top of my head exactly what it is.
Cover stories, oral stories.
The cover, oral history, that's the one. So um, they um, are gonna receive some of, some money from that. Um, it might be up to two thousand, but for sure a thousand dollars would go towards the historic, oral stories of Carver.
And they're gonna use that money to stand up a website so that they have a home for those stories to be saved.
Whatever they wanna do.
Right. That's all I have. All right.
Um, I didn't have a chance to, but I wanted to relay in your regular communication with Northland, but I thought they did a really good job with their presentation. And I also really liked that they, it came up about the park dedication funds and that they referenced the landy. But like, you know, cause that's my concept land, but like they adopt to like our terminology, you know? Cause it's, you know, and that was a concept, it was sometimes called something different. But I was just, like, it came up and I was like, oh, what are they gonna call it, what are they gonna call it? Um, so I just, I really think it fits me, just good partnership and that they adopt to um, you know, as we start narrowing down and envisioning things, um, they're there with us. Please pass that on.
Yeah, they're great, happy to do so.
You should have told them while they were here.
Well, I thought of it afterwards. When I heard that, I was like, look, Courtney says it's my turn.
Sitting on that for two hours.
You know, we've already talked about the public works tour, uh, so I, I don't think I need to go into any more of that. So I'll just reserve the right after I'm done. If something goes.
Nobody wants to go home tonight.
I want to go home tonight.
Kayla, anything?
I have nothing to add.
Eric, anything?
I'm good.
All right, good, it's my turn. Um, let's see, just a few things for me. Um, we have a fire department and public services open house on October seventh, always a good time, always like the fastest two and a half hours ever in the community. Um, let's see, on October ninth, I had a League of Minnesota Cities Board meeting, that was our October meeting. Um, we are very much in the midst of going through um, the legislative priorities. So the legislative priorities, I don't have it with me and I don't have it in this bag, but it is like a hefty, hefty, hefty document. Um, so if you guys are interested, I can bring that in the next time. Um, but it's still in draft form, um, and we're still working on that, which they will be finalized in our November meeting, I believe. So on uh, October tenth, we had a Carver County Mayor's meeting in Chesapeake at Red Bench owned by a Carver essence. Um, then on October eleventh, we had Carver Diwali, the Indian community of Carver puts together a Diwali celebration. Um, this year it was at the Eden Prairie High School. Um, and it is part like um, talent show and part song and dance and singing and then one part dinner. And it's just a really good time. I think today is actually Diwali, Diwali, the actual holiday. Uh, but a really fun event. On October twelfth, trunk or treat took place in downtown Carver. The uh, Carver Lions were giving out tree bags and I helped with that. Um, it was fantastic weather, it rained a little bit as folks were setting up. And then um, it was good for the two hours of the event and then just when we were done cleaning up, the skies opened up and it was a deluge. So um, real good planning on that one. Um, public services and facilities tour on the thirteenth, that, much like Eric, I think we've already talked a lot about. On October fourteenth, we uh, gave the HPC award to Barbara Kaiser, who lives just right down the street here at one thirteen Fourth Street East. Um, if you take a look at the pictures of it, speaking of rain, it was pouring when we took those pictures. So the pictures turned out really great. Um, Barbara has put a lot of work into that home and it's been fun to be driving past it, especially with it being so much on the Maythor Fair um, to see it. And those homes are just a labor of love, so it was cool to see the work that she's done on it. Um, and then um, in addition to the public services tour today, I was on Mayor Monday on K check radio, which is um, the station out of New Prague. So it was about a twenty-minute interview where I just shared some high-level um, updates on what's going on in the city of Carver. That is it for me, last call for anybody else who wants to say one more. Eric? Kayla?
I did wanna say thank you.
There we go.
There we go. I knew there was, cause I knew, I forgot something, and this is what I forgot, the public services open house. It is my kid's favorite day of the year, so I just wanted to thank public services and the fire department for opening up their doors to the community and creating such a wonderful event. Because my boys look forward to it all year long, so.
Awesome. All right, um, let's see, now we are going to go into closed session. Um, so I need, well, I'll make a motion to go in closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute one thirty-two D, uh, point zero five subdivision, three C, a closed session to discuss, develop and consider potentials offers to purchase real estate property located at four ninety Old Carver Road.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion of second, stay for the discussion. All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same side, motion passes, all right.
We're gonna hit it another round.
Enter into a purchase agreement for the property located at four ninety Old Carver Road for one hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
I will second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, with that, I just have one more, I'm sorry, going back to the never ending communications section. I wanted to reference the email that I sent and then to Brent and Brent forwarded on October thirteenth for, the subject was Blue Lake. I am planning on attending the Carver County Board meeting tomorrow morning. I am probably more than just a little bit flustered. Commissioner Unerman, who does not represent the city of Carver, has been going out of his way to share mistruths about our community. He is telling folks that the city of Carver is going to push the Met Council over capacity for sewer treatment. I went, I connected with Deb Barber. She gave me those Blue Lake talking points that were attached to that email that says, no, the city of Carver's growth is not going to push us over capacity. The entire region is growing and just like we have plans for our community to grow and to increase infrastructure, so does the Met Council. But that's not going to happen for a while and you guys know, we all know, the city of Carver isn't the only community that's growing here. So anyways, I have some talking points that I've typed up that I have ready for tomorrow morning, but I just kind of wanted to share that with you guys. In my mind, this is creating a real threat for our community because we live in a world where if you say the sky is pink and you say it with conviction, it becomes truth. And I'm worried about the damage that could potentially be done by sharing these alternative facts at best with the community. I've heard probably at least five or six instances where there's public record of him saying it. The most recent one was at their county board meeting two weeks ago. So I would love to have your support. If you can join me, that would be great, but I certainly understand that nine AM on a Tuesday is not conducive to everybody's schedule. So just wanted to share that with you guys and give you the opportunity to ask questions or tell me if you think I'm out of my mind.
I think that I'm, I'm happy that if there's a misconception going around that the city of Carver is at capacity or pushing Met Council over the edge for, with our growth. And that we obviously don't want that to affect our development, that people, the rumor mill gets running through and developers are saying, oh, there might be a problem out in Carver, maybe we don't want to go. So I think it's very valid to at least set the record straight with the entire Carver County Commissioners at their meeting tomorrow and then everyone will be present and everyone can hear what, what is the correct answer if there's some like miscommunications that are happening out there.
I agree. I think it's a good thing to have that communication made. Thank you.
And I would like to see the Carver County Commissioners adopt the document that Deb Barber provided as the single source of truth of the subject. They have done the research, they've done their vetting of this. It should stop in that meeting with that document. It was my intention to go to the meeting tomorrow morning with the mayor to say as much, unfortunately, I'm not on a plane at that time now, so I can't. But I think it's important that the, that's what takes place in the meeting.
I guess I'd probably need to learn more about it, but just the, yeah, but just like, you know, if there is a source, you know, whatever the source of truth is for plan the best we can, you know, that's what I want to read from.
Did you read the talking points that were from the Met Council that Brent sent?
No, because I could have seen the Met Council tomorrow night, but now I see that the other meeting is tomorrow morning. So like I said, I just need to read more about it, because yeah, I just, I just need the facts, so.
Okay, alright, that's all I have.
Just one thing, Council, the...
Tell more, one more thing.
I think you're gonna want to hear this. The, heard from the agent for four ninety Old Carver Road and they've accepted the city's offer.
Yes! Alright.
That was fast.
I should have brought the little streamer.
I know.
I'm glad you brought it.
So much.
That was, that was what, five minutes?
Brent's second. Okay, awesome.
Okay, you're fine with that, one more thing. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that, my bad.
Okay, I would entertain motion adjourned, do it quickly, otherwise, Brent.
I'll second. Oh, I, I thought you said I made a motion adjourned. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, got a motion?
I will second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, good evening.